Alright, it's Monday, October 15th, 2018. Is it the 16th today? Am I wrong?
Fifteenth.
Fifteen. Alright, I thought it was sixteen. I would like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Tony Corpey, here. Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Skokstedde Deitch. Michelle Hebner, here. Heather McBride. Kat Sexton.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Ella Barr Jeffries. Could please stand for federal agents?
........................................................................
Item one, approval of agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
There were two additions early today, or I should say, the one attachment to number 21, as well as a 22, just so everyone is aware in case you copied or looked at it. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Open forum. Item one, public open forum. Is there anybody for public open forum today? No? Okay. Moving on to item number two, presentation of Elk's September Students of the Month.
Brianna O'Loughlin is the Elk's September Female Student of the Month. Brianna is a very dedicated and passionate student who is always thinking about ways to help others. She is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and Strive, and has been on the A honor roll throughout her high school career. Outside of the classroom, Brianna has been a teacher assistant, helps with her mother's daycare, volunteered her time setting up for sports banquet's, freezer gizzard Blizzard Run, and for functions at St. Thomas Church. When not in school or participating in her volunteer activities, Brianna has held a part-time job at the Thunderbird Lounge. She is planning to attend a four-year college in the fall to pursue a degree in human services. Brianna O'Loughlin, Elk's September Female Student of the Month.
Hunter Wilson is the Elk's September Male Student of the Month. Hunter is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and has been consistently on the A honor roll and principals list throughout his high school career. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, Hunter has taken several college-level courses and has challenged himself academically. He's a very intelligent and respectful student to have in the classroom. Hunter leads by example, as he is captain for both cross-country and track. Additionally, he also is a member of the basketball team and trap team. Hunter is also very involved in the community as an Eagle Scout, and he volunteers for Ruby's Pantry, feeds my starving children, bagging groceries, and is an active member at Zion Lutheran Church. Hunter is employed at both Tim Hortons and Coca-Cola Bottling Company. Next year, he plans to attend college at either the University of Minnesota Duluth for environmental science, Amelia Stewart Community College for water operations. Hunter Wilson, the Elk's September Male Student of the Month.
And now, the presentation of the Elk's October Students of the Month.
Amelia Stewart is the Elk's October Female Student of the Month. Amelia is an exceptional student who has always challenged herself academically by choosing a rigorous academic schedule. She has also been on the principals list and received the Academic Excellence Award since ninth grade. Outside of the classroom, Amelia is a member of the swim team and has been a captain the last two years. She has been actively involved in dancing with Darcy for the past 15 years. Amelia is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and is currently our Honors Society Secretary. When not being actively involved at school, she works at Super One Foods, The Hideaway, and teaches swimming lessons. Amelia is planning to attend a four-year university in the fall to pursue a degree in pre-medicine and go on to become a radiologist. Amelia, the Elk's October Female Student of the Month.
Caleb Hostetter is the Male October Student of the Month. Caleb is an outstanding student and role model in our school. He is a member of the Minnesota Honor Society and is currently our Honors Society President. Caleb is currently taking concurrent enrollment classes at Falls High School and has been on the principals list every year since seventh grade. Along with maintaining excellent grades in the classroom, Caleb is very involved in the community, helping with Ruby's Pantry, clothing giveaways, and he runs the sound system on Sundays at Full Gospel Fellowship. He currently works at Super One Foods. Caleb is a hard-working and dedicated individual who strives for excellence in all that he does. Next year, he plans to attend a college to pursue a law degree and become a lawyer. Caleb Hostetter, the Elk's October Male Student of the Month.
Item one, approve past meeting minutes for the regular school bar meeting of September 17th, 2018. Item two, approve current accounts payable due in amount of $953,712.90. Item three, approve payroll in amount of $403,414.44 for pay periods September 28th and October 12th. Item four, approve hire of Kathleen Tompkins as the hourly choir instructor for the 2018-2019 school year, effective September 4th, 2018. Item five, accept resignation from Ashley Goff, paraprofessional, effective October 17th, 2018. Item six, recognize Jeremy Mann as volunteer wrestling coach for the 2018-2019 school year. Item seven, approve hire of Michelle McDonald as girls varsity head hockey coach for 2018-2019 season contingent upon getting a head coach certification. Item eight, accept resignation of Ashley Larson, paraprofessional, effective October 12th, 2018. Item nine, accept resignation due to retirement from Brenda Rasmussen, assistant cook, effective October 12th, 2018. Item 10, approve hire of Paul Fearing as hourly bus driver, effective October 15th, Item 11, accept resignation of Joel Carlson as hourly bus driver, effective September 17th, 2018. Item 11, whoops, item 12, recognize Alicia Hendrickson as a volunteer cross-country coach for 2018-2019 season. Item 13, second reading of school board policy 525 Violence Prevention. Item 14, second reading of school board policy 509 Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. Item 15, second reading of school board policy 419 Tobacco-Free Environment. Item 16, second reading of school board policy 421 Gifts to Employees and School Bar Members. Item 17, second reading of school board policy 504 Student Dress and Appearance. Item 18, second reading of school board policy 723 Stock Ebonifern. Item 19, approve the concurrent enrollment agreement with Misabie Range College for 2018-2019 school year. Item 20, approve memorandum of agreement for student training experience internship for non-allied health programs with the Migi State University. Item 21, approve agreement with commercial refrigeration for replacement of chiller in Bronco Arena at cost not to exceed $100,000. And item 22, approve proposal from Up North Builders for Bronco Arena drainage and damp proofing project. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
If I can just make a couple of comments. I apologize on number four. Ms. Tompkins has been working since the beginning of the year. We forgot that on the September board meeting, so it's not going to be... Just forgot it. The paraprofessionals, we've lost a couple. We have another add that we have to do for a student that has come in. We have posted, we have, I mean, it's an high school, people to interview, so we will move as quick as we can because we are short-staffed right now in that area. So, we've been pulling our, what do you call, our floaters and eating them up, and so, anyway, we'll get that going. Just wanted you aware of that. I would thank Ms. Rasmussen and the other employees that are leaving us for their services always. It's been a long time, some here been a short time, but thanking them for their service. Number 20, that's just a standard deal, mainly for senior student teachers like the Migi Supplies, if anyone needs practice in places. They still approve it through us, you know, anytime that they have a need or someone wants to come here, but they get the plan in place to start with. So, that is that. 21, just so you're aware, and I think everyone's, hopefully everyone's aware, when they were putting the pumps back in for the arena and getting it ready to go, it should have been a done project. They determined the chiller, which was not part of this project, was the, somehow there was some gap when it leaks whatever, get it over my head here. The material that's in the chiller, doesn't matter, but it puts off the gas. Again, it's not, and they could detect it from when they're welding the joints together they're connected to. So, they did a pressure test on it, and it's definitely leaking. So, it is 50, 51 years old, it was actually a little older than the building. You know, the nameplate on it produced earlier. And so, from their standpoint, that whole taking insulation off and trying to tear it apart and redo the piping inside is not an option. It's going to be deteriorated. So, it was time. We were aware and would have, I guess we would have known it was leaking, we would have done it at the beginning of summer with everything else, but not knowing that, you know, we should, we're hoping we would get a few more years out there, whatever. So, anyway, it is out now, and they're putting in a, I think it's called four plate type chiller system. It needs three is the recommended amount. They put an extra plate, you know, for backup and for redundancy, if that's the right word. I'm asking you to approve it. We didn't go out because if it was over 100,000, that's why it's a guarantee under. They're going to do it for time and material and give us a record of number of hours and stuff like that. Otherwise, we had to, for the most part, do it two weeks. You know, if you're an advertiser and just didn't feel we had time, they'd done the rest of the work in there. And so, the engineers from, that have been working with us are very comfortable with the design that they're putting. There's two options, and again, there's not one that's maybe necessarily better, you know, it's kind of Ford or Chevy or Dodge or whatever. People have preferences. But, they're very comfortable with what commercial refrigeration is put together for a plan. Their name is on it as well, so they make sure it's done right and, you know, appropriately. Because I asked right away, is it 100,000, is it 200,000, 300, you know, how big a piece is this? And they said it should be around 100,000. Well, I said, "It should be, we have to bid because if it comes in at 110,000, we have an issue." You know? And so, that's where they were fine guaranteed. And maybe they'll come in at 85. But, you know, it just really depends on how long it takes them. But, it's removed now, and the parts are coming in that they need, and they start putting it together. Should be this week. But that said, it's probably going to be into a week or so, maybe a week and a half into November. And so, Bill and I have talked, and he's working on getting girls hockey sometime at Cary Park. And that's what we need to, you know, mainly focus on is making sure people have practice time. So, that's where that is. The other piece with the arena, and it's happened for many, many years, but when we get weather like we've had for the next, or the last, I'm going to say, two weeks, three weeks where it's a lot of rain, wet, the back of the building, meaning the side on, close to the practice fields here, has been leaching water. Okay, well, the summers, the groups were working in there, when we got some heavier rains, it flooded in there, you know, area on, I'm going to say, on this side, bow to bow where the ice, I mean, like with an inch of water. And it's just getting worse and worse, and for some reason, I'm guessing it's cracking more and more, you know, in a spot. And actually, I think it was a week and a half, two weeks ago, we got a good downpour. It's actually bubbling out in one spot, you know, and so, it needs to get fixed. And we were thinking of leaving until, you know, next summer to do it. And when I was talking with Dave, he thought he could squeeze it in yet this fall, get it covered, you know, get it dried out and get it, you know. So, we put it on here, the projects in here, if you pull, and I didn't print it here, you have to look on your sheet. He gave us an estimate, and I think it's 24,000 or something like that. Put new drain tile in, get it hooked back, hooked back up to the storm drains there and, whatever you call it, water seal, you know, the building. And if not, it's just going to deteriorate the building more and more. So, I have any questions?
With the date on here, how it says 2018 to 64, is that like the coverage of the refrigeration, the chiller itself?
Say it again, on what are you looking at?
It's still under number 21.
Yep.
How the contract itself is 2018 to 64.
I don't have...
Who's the agenda? Sorry.
Show me the...
I don't see it. I'm just wondering if it, is it like a 46-year thing, or is it?
No, I'm guessing that's supposed to be 18, 19. Do you see it on there where the quick view, the attachment is? If you open an attachment, that's a contract, you're actually...
Right. I just wasn't sure if it was like the 46 years, like this was the 51 or whatever, or if it was...
This is contract, this is what you can see. It's a very generic...
The number.
Yeah, no, the name of that, that's just naming the attachment.
Okay.
Oh, that's just their...
Gotcha.
That's their proposal.
Oh, yeah, right here, number 21. I was going to say, I just wasn't sure if that's what it meant. What's that, 64 years, 13, and...
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to the resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas school board policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts and donations to the district. Whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota statute 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the school board of International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. District donations received: PCA ML for homecoming game admissions, $3,000. Mr. Pete Foundation for peaceful playgrounds, $4,500. Falls Education Foundation Purple Pride for FHS athletic teams, $6,528.60. Falls Education Foundations for FHS Educational Needs, $11,462.75. Falls Education Foundation for FES Educational Needs, $5,573.81. Girls Hockey Boosters for Huddle Software, $300. Boys Hockey Boosters for Huddle Software, $300. Boys and Girls Basketball Boosters for Huddle Software, $600. Boys Football Boosters for Huddle Software, $500. Girls Volleyball Boosters for Huddle Software, $300. Girls Softball Boosters for Huddle Software, $300. PCA ML Safety Committee for Fall Athletic Needs, $1,000. Birthday Club Friends in Honor of Gil Rasmussen for Project Creed, $80. PCA ML Juice, Fruit, and Breakfast Bars for Walk to School Day, $200. PCA ML Two Pallets of Copy Paper for Back to School Startup, $2,700. Could I get a motion to approve the resolution for acceptance of gifts and donations?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All in favor, whereupon the resolution was declared adopted. Administrative reports. Melissa Kate.
Currently, we're at 5:23. Last one, we were at 5:27, so we're at now 4:00. And as we read, we did receive peaceful playgrounds, and our hope was to have that done during MEA, the days after, we have after MEA, but the weather, I don't think is going to cooperate for us in order to get the paint to stay and that sort of thing. So, I'm working with Shelby Nelson, and we'll just have extra time to plan where we will, like which games the stencils we want to use and where the placement will be. And then, we're working with Pi to hopefully get some sheds built over the course of the year for storage, get more playground materials for our fields. And then, we just had parent-teacher conferences, those went really well, and we have our Bronco Pike Sistership Award coming up at the end of the quarter, November 7th. So, what's that?
What's the date of that?
November 7th, I believe.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
I was just wondering about that peaceful playground. I didn't know much about it.
So, it's basically like different stencils, and it came with like a painting machine of different games, and then it has structured rules. So, it's like structured games that we can put out on the pavement out there to just give the kids a little bit more options of things to do when they're on the playground. This is what they currently have. And it comes with some like staff development too, of like conflict resolution and different things like that, so.
I have Tim's.
Okay, say what's here.
Enrollment wise, we're, I just, let me get on this. Currently, there's 545 kids at the high school, six through 12, 543 last month, so up two for the month. Highlight though, we are, you know, down significantly from last year. Again, that's from the graduating class as well as, you know, some other losses. And we'll talk more about that down the road, get into budget, but something we wanted highlighted. He said positive results for moving the majority of the sixth grade teachers down to the West End Hallways to keep the majority of the sixth grade classes in that end. He just, he's had positive comments, wanted that known. Many compliments on the new hallway lighting and refurbishing the lockers at West End. This you saw on your tour last, last month. Parent-teacher conferences, last week, Wednesday and Thursday went well. I was here the whole first night and part of, a little bit the second night, it seemed that it was good attendance, you know. They do have sheets and Debbie keeps a tally, if you will, so I don't have exact numbers, but it seemed like a lot of people in the building, so that's a good thing. Next round of conferences are December 12th. Said we are in the process of selecting a student school board representative. I don't know, I didn't ask him if our current is no longer interested, or if they have to technically open it again this year. So, anyway, we should have a new person, or possibly the same person sitting here. That's it for Tim.
Okay.
In no specific order, I just wanted to make you aware, for some reason, in the last month, I've gotten hit with a couple requests for donations, and I just wanted to make sure the board was on the same page. And I'm not going to throw out who, but they are local organizations, and typically, at least my understanding, is we shouldn't be donating, we pick any group we want unless it has an effect really on us. Like, we've given to the Mr. Pete Foundation, you know, like a free rental of the gym, we cover the supervision. But again, they're raising funds to give back to us, if, and I just, can I use someone as an example? Mr. Holden, you know, for some reason, they were having, you know, some deal to raise funds for us to give to, where do you draw the line? And they're, they're good causes, but I just wanted, just in case someone, you know, again, has nothing to support, to say, you know, they're doing something for a veterans program. Or really, I mean, I don't, again, unless the board feels differently, you know, or, you know, Cancer Society, or, you know, list goes on and on, where do you draw the line? So, I just want you aware, we've had, and I think they understood, we have public funds, and what, you know, how do you determine which ones? Once he explained, you know, they were looking for, you know, some sporting passes and things like that, that unless you want to directly differently, I mean, we're, we're giving out public funds that, you know, we're, so I just, like I said, it hasn't come up really in the past to me, so it surprised me. I mean, and I think, like I said, the two individuals, I think, understood, I'm going to say they were happy, but understood. What can I do in an arena, open house? And before I get going too far into planning and working with Bill and Tom and whoever might be involved, I guess I want your thoughts. My thought was probably the first girls hockey game, because that'll be the first home game, would be to, for the most part, I think, open the doors, not charge admission, get it publicized. Again, I won't ask for ideas, you let me know what you want, and try and, you know, get anyone, you know, a thank you to the community, come and see, you know, not that everything's done, I mean, it should be done, and the boards are all up, you know, and it should be done, 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 so to speak.
Would you open the doors early for tours or anything?
We surely can.
Maybe an hour or hour and a half or three days.
And, yeah, we can have it open, and I don't know, I, I mean, I've thought about ideas of, you know, should we get donors for our cake afterwards? Should we have a ribbon cutting ceremony? You know, it's 100% of what, you know, you guys think should, and again, the idea would be to thank the community, you know, and come see what, you know, what your referendum did here, you know, if your bond did. And it's not completely done. We have backed up tomorrow, a person from the Nelson Ruby, which is doing the air exchange, is going to be here. So, I mean, we're not done, done with all the, but this was the major, major piece. So, I'm open to ideas, we don't need any board action. What do you think? Any...
Well, I think it's a great concept, and I'm trying to everybody thinks a little bit, though. Melissa, some one ideas.
Or if you want to give me some, you know, feedback, as you, you know, our ideas you think of, I mean, do we want to just do open admission? I guess that's the...
I think so. Yeah, for that perspective.
That'd be nice.
So, we will get going, obviously, we have to, before we make anything public, make sure it's going, and it should be. The first game is like the 15th, I think, or public look again, or it's a way, you know, a little ways in November, so I don't think we're going to have an issue, but okay, so that's that reminder, and we don't have to do it right now, but I've gotten response from three, on the MSBA convention, January 17th and 18th, and in the cities that, you know, we've, some of them went to it, and again, everyone doesn't have to go, just throw it out, because I need to get rooms and make sure we have enough to cover everything. So, think about it, look at your schedules, you know, if you can commit or not, or, you know, whatever. And the last thing I wanted to hit on is, Michelle and I went and met with the county attorney, Nagoski, Rich Maston, Karen Adeline, and Michelle and myself, was it Thursday? Right? Last week, a lot of the days, with regards to the toilet picking issue that we have. And there's two things that made through, well, I shouldn't say, that Mr. Nagoski, one thing Mr. Nagoski recommended, and then another that came from Rich, and I think he backed up. For the most part, if you want, how do I say this, if you want the people held or charged in some manner to get some restitution, which at least in my mind, needs some community service, you know, to get it diverted, what we really have to do is go like a civil route to ask for restitution, meaning, you know, take how many hours the employees worked to clean it up, how much time has been put into that, get a dollar figure. I mean, I've, and I haven't even put any effort into it because I wanted to talk with you. Again, not, just say it was $500. He would then charge those individuals, okay, with that figure, with the idea, I don't think the board's looking to actually get that money back, but to divert them and say, "Okay, this is worth 10 hours of community service, five hours." So, I think, we don't have a choice in what that is. But if someone didn't want to do that, then obviously, they would go in front of the judge and, you know, fight the case, just like any other civil, you know, charge looking for restitution. And that's the piece that I need, I guess, a little direction. The second thing that he would like to see done, and I'm willing to do it as long as board backs... The second thing that he would like to see done, and I'm willing to do it as long as the board backs me, is he would like, well, it came from Rich and Mr. Naglowski was behind it. That we should actually get the city to develop an ordinance and act like an example from another county. Because he said it's much clearer that, and a more, and easier to enforce back. It doesn't matter if you don't care or you really do care if it happens, if it's against city ordinance. You can't do it, so it's chargeable. And again, it's, the example I have is from Kansas County, maximum fine is $300 for the, you know, offense at least on the first goal room. But he would like that brought to the city and, you know, possibly city of Rainier. And also I throw out the county and see if they will support, so everyone's on a level playing field. As far as whether they'll, well, any of them will or none of them will support it, it's yet to be seen. Otherwise, and again, Michelle, you can help me, I don't understand how it's not littering or different things, but it just doesn't fall into that route. So unless you want to just go after the restitution. And I guess my piece, just I struggle with the athletes getting hit and the others not having some consequence. Again, not looking for, you know, 100 bucks, 200 bucks, whatever the value is. That's my idea is if we don't do that, a couple athletes get slapped on the hand and the others don't. Maybe that, maybe you're fine with that, I don't know, but.
Okay, a couple of questions, and I know I wasn't here last month, so I'm sorry if I didn't mean anything. But would the athletes not have to do the, whatever, if there was a restitution, the athletes would not have to do that, correct?
Until there's a charge, I guess I'm going to throw it out to you, what? We don't have control, but what I, what I mentioned, and Michelle can back me up, was an individual that came in, admitted, and, how do I say it? Worked with us. I think has a different, you know, should have a different penalty. And I don't think that's different than going to court. I mean, if you work with them and, you know, possibly give them information, you might get a different sentence, okay? And so I guess my hope is, and I gave this in the materials I turned over, there was one individual that very much... Well, two individuals, one athlete that did and one person that's not an athlete, okay? So my hope would be that athlete would, when it gets charged, would get a different consequence. Maybe it's just a high school league piece. Maybe it's, you know, two hours of community service and a high school league violation. Now, that's up to them to decide. The other person that is not an athlete but cooperated, hopefully they would get something, you know, they, they came in, they did, you know, admitted, gave us information.
How much is the high school athlete?
It's two weeks, two games, whichever is longer.
Okay.
And then there's two individuals that have not come in, have not done anything, their parents were asked to send them in, they have not come in. One is an athlete and one is not. And I guess, I hope that they get whatever the sentence is. You know, obviously the athlete will get the two weeks, two games, and if, you know, the judge feels it's worth 10 hours of community service, I think that person gets the full, you know, five hours. I don't know what they'll say is, you say that again, because I, I mean, you know, if that's up, I think that's worse on, you know, to be honest.
So I guess I'm just wondering, and I haven't read the handbook for a while, is it, is it in the handbook to help students understand it? Because some people, I'm hearing some people go, oh, I didn't even know that, you know, you couldn't do that. Should we make it clear in some way, more clear?
Who's telling you that they don't, that they think that they can?
No, I'm not going to name names.
Well, I think it's been very clear over the past several years. We've made it a very clear stance.
That they are not toilet paper school property.
Yes, in general.
It hasn't been my experience since I've been on the board, but, so what you're saying is you think it's clear to everyone? And that there's only some people, the ones that have talked to me, that didn't know it. Is that what you're saying? And I'm not saying you're wrong, Michelle.
No, 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 I think I'm just choosing my words. I think that is probably a fair statement that some people don't... You know, they say that they don't know, that was not okay. I believe that that's what some people think.
Okay, so what if, what if...
Well, we can add it to the handbook, but there's, you know, the statement in the handbook that, you know, you can't list every... You know what I'm saying? If someone, you know, let's just throw it out there, rights on the wall. I mean, yeah, I guess that's vandalism, what, but it's not written in the, you know, word for word in. So the piece that, you know, some people don't think there's, you know, a problem with it. There's other people that feel it is a problem.
Right, and some people think it's like more positive than negative. So all I'm saying is communication is always something that's good and it doesn't hurt anything. So if we were to say, hey, you know, somehow in the handbook saying toilet paper, you know, whatever on school property will not be tolerated or something. I mean, just so, some kind of a notation that maybe when people go through that handbook, whoever is going through it with some of the students can say, now remember, there was a big deal before, remember. It's always nice to give one good warning.
And the, just so you're aware, there were girls back two, three, four years ago that got caught that were athletes. They, they got the two weeks, two games. At that time, it was not pressed, you know, it was not school property when they were caught. It was, you know, so for us to say, well, we didn't press it last year, but we didn't catch it last year. You know, so I mean, again, your house is done and you don't want to press the issue, I mean, that's your choice, you know. The problem I have, A, again, the consequences. The second thing is, you know, taxpayers are paying for the employees to clean. And, you know, and I guess that's where, not that it's $20,000 or anything, it's not. But I don't think my taxes should be being used for people to clean up toilets.
I agree.
You know, so, again, I...
I just would like, if anybody's against it, you know, I'd like to hear, but why not?
Why can't there be like a straight across the board, like rather than having athletes versus non-athletes? Why can't it be just a community service?
Because you have to do the Minnesota State High School.
If they get in trouble, then they end up...
Well, and that's no different, I use the example, I've used it many times, see if you get a minor consumption, okay? Whatever the fine is for a minor consumption, everyone gets that. High school league, you get two weeks, two games, that's your first offense. I mean, that's athletes or, you know, extracurricular participants are held to a higher standard, different standards. So they get, you can say, double banning is true.
Is there like a thing that they have to sign in the beginning of their season that states this stuff, so they...
High school paper, yes. And again, it doesn't, it's toilet paper laid out in there. It's called Action on Becoming a Matt.
Yeah.
You know, there are chemical, you know, more spelled out, but again, it doesn't list every drug or every alcohol, you know, so...
I just think they need to know that this is their schools and they wouldn't go toilet paper their own house, so.
Well, I think some of them...
And then go clean it up.
I think they have, just I have heard people toilet paper their own house, that's bad for me, but...
So I guess, let me put the first question. Are we on board that we want to try stopping this? If we want to try stopping this, Mr. Naglowski's recommendation is getting coordinates with the city, cities, and county if at all possible. Do you want me to go forward with that? I guess is the first question.
I would say yes.
It's been going on now at the school for about four or five years. Before that, it was just houses around town. And it just seems to be the last four or five years, well, it's just going to continue if something isn't done.
I agree.
Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of the discussion that we had dealt with kids out running around from 1:00 to 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning.
Correct.
And something happening. That is the, I'm going to say impetus of, you know, we need to try to do something. Obviously, the toilet paper and piece, we would love to see an alternative, you know, that is not as messy, does not end up in neighbors' yards, does not whatever. So that is part of it too, but the majority is the safety issue. And, you know, I guess leaving it in the back, that, you know, that's, that's the big backing of that. I agree. I don't know why we need to do our own house, we need a school, but... So that's, I will move forward with that. The second thing is the group on board, you know, with them going for restitution, which in whole means they get diverted to some community service.
I think that that is, I mean, how we're ever asking is for it to be equal, you know, equally compensated. Not asking for them to, you know, do 100 hours of community service. So if it took them, you know, however long to clean it up, that or money or whatever, money, you know, works out to be given. Yeah, I'd much rather have them do community service. I mean, that's, that's the problem I have with the whole thing, is everybody was cool with it. It was a couple of kids out there for a half an hour were cleaning up. Other than that, it was the janitors. So everybody was cool with it. Next time it happens, it'd be super cool if they came and cleaned it up with us, you know, or the janitors.
Every day for a month.
Yeah, right? And that thing, that stuff just doesn't go away.
You know, I had, I had discussions with a few parents at a function that I did for the school recently. They were all, these are the parents with the students that encouraging, if they encourage their kids to do it, they found nothing wrong with it. And of course, I told them what was wrong with that, but I won't get into that. So the issue is also that the parents are encouraging it. So, some parents, you know. So I think this, we have to do this in order to, if the parents aren't going to understand that, we have to try to show them that isn't a proper thing to do.
And there are, I'll just be honest, there are some other communities, but majority of this is not, I mean, take your neighbors to the South, you're voting for them. They don't, but I mean, I've talked to people in Nindis, they don't, I've talked to people in some of the range cities. Now, I have heard a few other towns that has had something similar, but it's not every town, every city that this goes on. And they're all sitting at the table today, you know, I mean, that, so it is something that's went on here for a while. And just like anything, it seems to escalate or, you know, get just over time ratcheted up a little bit. And, you know, I just don't want, you know, something to happen and we're back seeing anything to deter. And is this a little bit of community service or whatever thing going to stop it? I don't know, you know. Hopefully it'll at least get Lincoln and... Hope there is, so, that's all I need and that's all I...
Maybe we just need like a homecoming activity, like during the school hours, dress up the outside nicely, buy a green ball, maybe.
Put signs up, yeah.
Yeah. There you go, the school, homecoming week.
Do a good strut.
Right, all together during daylight hours.
Yeah, not one or two in a morning. Anyone have anything else?
All right, committee reports. Anybody have anything?
At the rec committee, like nothing happened. I think, I think we may be ratified the joint powers agreement, but that was a long time coming anyways. So other than that, I think we opened and closed pretty fast.
And our community ed meeting was canceled because we didn't have enough people show up, so.
Any progress on the month's report from community ed?
I haven't, I haven't brought it back to you, I've never had a conversation with Rachel, so...
Because that should be something that she should be able to put together and present herself.
For the most part, it's only, I, my thought, because I hadn't thought about it for a year or two, but it's really going to have to be a community piece that we do, you know, to reach out to Taekwondo and find if, you know... We, you know, we know where like swimming, they do passes, you know, important passes, they have sold. But to me, it's going to have to be kind of a, you know, the one she's doing and what we've sold, you know what I'm saying? Otherwise...
Well, you can just possibly do an overview too. I mean, other than the specific numbers that the principals get.
But I think if things aren't here, that, you know, take, take like a...
I guess I'm more concerned with all, with the classes that she's putting on in the programming specifically. I mean, our swimming passes and those things, those are just generally going on throughout the year anyway, so I don't think... I mean, if you have a big run of five extra swim passes, it's not going to...
What is it you're, like, exactly?
Uh, kind of the same things we're looking for, we were talking about the whole thing, what classes were offered, how many people attended the classes? If the class was canceled, what fees were for the class, what the cost for the class.
I guess they didn't realize it was something we were supposed to bring to the meeting.
No, they just asked last, last week because two months before, whatever, you know, we had, looking at her. And she brought a big table for the year, you know. But the question is, if you offered, you know, 60 events compared to 40 last year, did we really serve any more kids? You know, and that's the piece for adults or whatever. And so I don't think it's a bad idea, just I'll be honest, like I said, I wrote it in my agenda and thought about it and did get back to the source. We talked about it.
Because she gave me the impression that she had, like whatever software she uses is where she extracted the data from, if we were to want that.
She can keep track of it, however, I think, you know, going to her board, they should, you know, do get it, I think it's just a matter of keeping a tally. Whether it's every month or every two months or whatever, we get a decent report back.
Well, I think it's an important part of our culture here and to have a feel for what's actually going on, I think is...
Do the classes run by the month?
No, there's like, like last Wednesday night, there come in this one night, you know, she had a class going, you know...
Like whatever they have during the month.
So some, you know, whatever is going on during that month, okay?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
And anybody can teach a class, you know, sign up to teach, so it just depends on their schedule when they sign up or what they do.
You hear that KCCTV? Anybody can teach a class.
Yes, everybody can.
All right, if I have no further committee reports, beg to motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
I have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried at 5:46.